I think we could start with introductions. I know we all don't, I think everybody knows just about everybody. You're the only new one, Raissa. So I'm Sayla Goban. I'm the Ward A City Councilor here in the city of Springfield, as well as the president of the Indigenous Citizens Council, and I'm a clinician, a private practice clinician. Adelis?
Hi, everyone. Adelis Palbos. I am.
What do you want us to share? Just our role or?
Adelis is like me. She has many, many, many. Your role here on the Mental Health Subcommittee. She's so helpful.
I think wherever the need is, I'm always willing to help, so I'll fill in wherever the need is. I did prepare a PowerPoint around data. I do have a data lens also for, I'm guessing for tonight. You know how the current state that we're at with mental health, so that's why I'm tonight. But I'm willing to change those hats anytime that there's a need.
Community health workers, professor at Bay Path, da-da-da-da-da.
Yeah. You name it.
Jessica Collins, Public Health Institute of Western Mass. I'm here on behalf of our team. Tiffany Rafino, Elise Aine Binder, et cetera.
Excellent. And Kathy?
Hello, I'm Kathy McHugh. I work at BHN and I'm here doing whatever we can to make this better.
Thank you. Teresa?
Hi, I'm Teresa Glenn. I work for the Springfield Department of Health and Human Services, and I'm the Problem Gambling Coordinator there.
And Raissa?
Hi, I'm the Senior Management of the All-Patient Clinics for Gandara Center. And you know, my boss, Chelsea Bryan, who actually joins this meeting, has been here and helped me help as we want to integrate all our services and also bring our residential programs into this as well.
Sarah?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Sarah Kendall. I'm with Golden Years Behavioral Health Group and just very excited to be able to be part of this and future efforts.
Thank you. Ayana?
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm here representing Elena Ramos's office. He's very supportive of this effort and super excited to be here with everyone.
Thank you. Nicole?
Hi, everybody. I am Nicole. I am a community member. I am a parent advocate in the community, and I'm here to represent the family voice.
Thank you. And Beverly, do you want to just introduce 717 Media?
Good morning, everyone. I'm Beverly. I'm serving as a note taker tonight, and I also have a social media marketing company called 717 Media. Happy to be here and support Zeta with this very important initiative.
Thank you. And Carolyn, we're just doing introductions. Oh, you're muted. There you go.
Hi, I'm Carolyn.
Hi there. She's representing one of our faith-based programs, St. John's Congregational Church.
Carolyn? Yes, I am.
Excellent, excellent. We do want the churches. Everybody needs to be involved in this effort. So I just want to thank everyone for being here. I really, really appreciate it. We had our first mental health checkup launch on last Wednesday, I believe it was, and I think it was amazing. Everybody came out, everybody participated. Nicole, Adelis, Angela, Helica was doing the mental health checkups. I think everybody was doing them, so it was really great. And as we continue to say, the reason we're doing that is to prevent a crisis, right? That's how this all started at the beginning of the year. The city council decided that it was time that we had a mental health subcommittee on the city council, and that's how we got to be here. So I want to thank everyone for being here and being supportive of this effort. Any questions about mental health checkup day before we go to our data presentation?
I had one question, which is, I'm assuming, so I know that it's scheduled monthly, on the third Wednesday of the month, I think?
Yeah.
And there was some question that came from our team that was there. Will the location remain the same as well?
Right. So no, what my vision was, and this might change, right? That's my vision, and this is a group effort. What I was thinking we would do is that each agency would do a mental health checkup at their agency on that day. We have lawn signs for anyone who didn't get one that day. If you were for, so you could put a lawn sign out in front of your lawn on that day, so people could know that you're having it, and then, of course, you can also advertise it. We do want to go back to Mass Appeal. Nicole did a fabulous job on Mass Appeal when she went on last month, right before the launch. We'd like to go on Mass Appeal, just to remind people that this is available to them. State reps offices here because we're hoping to get the insurance companies to pay for this somehow. And I'm in the process of trying to see if I could get either the Health and Human Service Department here in Springfield to compensate the agencies, so whenever you do an assessment, that's a clinician's time, of course, you know, and it should only take 15 minutes. But with the people who are going to be coming in, I imagine they might be, you know, needing more services. So if you can't build their insurance company for whatever reason, and you know, I'm hoping to be able to get some compensation to the agencies that do this, that are going to be doing it ongoing. So on the third Wednesday of the month, each agency should be able to offer that service.
Got it. Thank you so much. That's, I get it.
Thank you. And did you guys get a lawn sign, Kathy?
Yes, we did. Thank you.
Perfect, perfect. Okay. Anybody else? Any other questions?
Thank you. Jonathan, do you want to introduce yourself real quick?
Good afternoon. How you doing, everyone?
How are you?
This is, my name is Jonathan Alicia from Latino Counseling Center.
Oh, thank you so much. I'm so glad you're here. Awesome. So, okay, so now what we'll do, if no one else has any other questions or any of the comments, we'd like to go right into our presentation. Adelis, do I need to make you host so that you can chair?
Yes, if you could share powers, that would be great. I'm very much appreciated.
I'm sorry, Zeta. I just wanted to make a mention of something real quick. In terms of the mental health days, I wondered if this was sort of thought about, but having something very distinctively different for our youth versus our adults in terms of those checkup days, in terms of those questions, just because I think there needs to be a little bit more clarity around those particular questions that were asked of us last week for our youth. And so if we can kind of look at those a bit differently or add to them, because I know I sat for one of them, and I was thinking about, you know, a young person sitting for that. So I just wanted to put that out there. Maybe you've thought about it already, but I just wanted to put that out there.
Yeah, that's a good point. And I know that the Youth Mental Health Coalition is involved in this effort right here, and our clinicians know how to interview youth. So I think, you know, if a youth comes in, of course, they're not going to ask them about any bills that they need to pay. But, you know, they'll ask about their mental health, you know, and their friends. So we are, there is a big difference, and that's absolutely right. So thank you for bringing that up. Okay.
Can I follow up on that question? Just because when, it's not listed in today's data's presentation, but I'm happy to pull that. There is an increase on youth homelessness. So maybe that question should be carefully considered, whether it's left in or not. So I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, thank you. And we will all definitely take that into consideration.
Okay, so I will.
Thank you.
I have two puppies. Many of you know that, and one of them is closely nearby with some separation anxiety. So if you hear me.
We'll assess him later.
Yeah. Any heavy breathing, I comment, it's not me. It is him. Okay, well, it's really nice to be able to be here tonight, and thank you, Zeta, for asking me to, you know, just bring up some data regarding mental health in Springfield. This is something I've done for different parts in Massachusetts, and, you know, just being able to talk on it is really important and dear to, you know, my heart. I know that pre-pandemic, we know that we had a high number, but through the data, you'll see that those numbers, many of you work in the field, right? I'm kind of speaking to the choir tonight, right? But it's just really, I guess, to confirm what you are experiencing and what you already know and what you are seeing. So at any point, if you have any questions or would like to add anything, please feel free to unmute, you know, and share. This is, you know, just a little bit of what I do and sharing what I know. So I think before I go in, I will share that a little bit more, just so you know my role. So I didn't mention my name. I also work as an assistant program coordinator for Holyoke Community College, but I also work as a consultant. A lot of my consulting positions are with DPH on data, and so that's where my experience comes from tonight. Well, as I mentioned, pre-pandemic, right, we were all experiencing some really, you know, mental health concerns. But tonight, we're going to really look at how COVID-19 has impacted our communities, communities of color, marginalized communities, communities that were already disproportionately impacted due to systemic and structural racism, which we know that COVID-19 has really affected individuals of color at a higher rate than any other communities. And something that I always share when it comes to data is that there's always room for improvement, right? Because this data was conducted and surveyed by about 2,000 residents in Massachusetts, and we know that the number that live in Massachusetts are way more. So this is just a fragment of what we are actually experiencing. But if you would like more information, I will, this is right on the DPH website also. I'll be, you know, feel free to drop it in the chat for you, for you to review yourself. So something that we would look at is the social justice training, right? We know that there are room for improvements within our system. We know that access to healthcare and resources are not the same for each individual. We know that inequalities have been an issue for decades, not just now with COVID, right? However, during COVID, we've seen the numbers increase, right? And so those inequities become even more. And something that is really important is that we live in the United States, right? We say we're proud to be an American, but the systemic and structural racism, right, and how we keep individuals oppressed, right? We know that the medical field, there is that higher Arco Power and Valsus, right? And so we know that it's, the way it affects individuals of color, access to healthcare and resources are not the same. And that will also come out in redlining in Massachusetts, where, you know, we have 351 local boards of health. No one else in the state, in the world, has that many local boards of health in their state, right? And so why is that? And if we have that many local boards of health, should we have not known the needs within the community a little bit better than what was presented with this data due to COVID? I will also acknowledge that for our individuals that identify as Black, African-American, they haven't only been experiencing the pandemic of COVID-19, but also the death of George Floyd, right? And that has really impacted a lot of individuals, and I bring that up because it's also impacted the data, right? So participants, when we compare the data to other surveys, participation within this population has decreased also, right? And I remember sitting on the phone with individuals that identify with this population and were just even more hesitant to share because of what was going on in the political world, excuse me. So I just want to bring that up also because it is very important to acknowledge. So now, this data that we are looking at today is on age 25 through 34, right? And there is a difference, as you all know, mental health and mental health issues or diagnosis, right? We all have mental health, right? Stress impacts us, you know, where we live, whether we sleep well, whether we practice self-care, burnout, things like that, right? So now thinking, these were the two questions, excuse me, that were posed in this survey, right? So mental health, now thinking about your mental health, which includes stress, depression, and problems with emotions. How many days during the past 30 days was your mental health not good? So 45.5 reported a greater than 15 days of not having good mental health. I also think it's really important to break that down within gender because we know that our LGBTQ community is also very impacted in, by the services. We know that they experience a lot of barriers when seeking services, and so I just wanted to highlight the numbers and that breakdown there. And then income. We know that not only insurance is a prestige component of healthcare, but our income, right? If we have a better income, we are able to afford better foods. We are able to afford better insurance, a better place to live, and, you know, not worry about many of the things that are going to come up. And I say worry because we know how stress affects our mental health. So when we look at the overall number of 45.5 and then 42.4 have made less than $35,000 a year, that's that connection there. So the next question also was mental health. Excuse me. In the past month, have you had any PTSD-like reactions to things you have seen, heard, or experienced related to COVID-19 outbreak? This one is 35.9, and then again, here's the breakdown between gender. And then for income, this was 31.2% that made a household income of $35,000 or less a year. Anything concerning so far or surprising, or is it just confirming what you already know?
Confirming.
Okay. I take the silence as confirming. So when I present at Bay Path or HCC or any training, I always ask, you know, just because I like interaction. So this, this data right here, I think it's really alarming and it's a good visual, right? Because this is January through June of 2019. We've had 11% of individuals reported symptoms of anxiety disorder depressive, right? Compared to January 2021. Now, you see that this is in 2019, it was six months, and for 2021 was one month. And it's, it's four times higher for one month in 2021. That is very concerning. So I think this is really important to bring up because we know that there is a crisis right now with clinicians, with community health workers, as I advocate for community health workers also, because a lot of times, community health workers are the ones helping navigate the individual through the resources or the system in making that referral also, right? So a lot of times, we're sitting with the individual, accompany them while they are being assigned, but we know that lack of representation within the clinicians are also an issue. So I know that's a different subject, but it just adds on. And then this is by race. So we have other non-Hispanic reported 48.9%, non-Hispanic Black reported 48%, Hispanic or Latino reported 46.3%, all adults 42.4%, non-American white 40.9%, non-American Asian 33.1%, which is just again.
Non-Hispanic white, non-Hispanic Asian.
Yeah. Okay. So as I work in the medical field also, I think it's really important to bring up these issues that we've seen. You know, the top five reasons why there have been delays in healthcare, right? And this question was specifically on healthcare. And I know that tonight, we're talking about mental health, but we can't disconnect our minds from our bodies, right? And if someone can't, you know, get checked for, you know, a COVID testing or is worried about getting a vaccine, which I did a lot of vaccine hesitancy trainings. They're just worried about insurance, a lot of things. You know, we know that the digital divide is really an issue within our community in Springfield also. Not everyone has accessibility or is able to afford internet and, you know, laptops or smartphones. And then even if they are, the way to use the technology could be challenging for some individuals. Though we know that there was a high appointments canceled or delayed. They were worried about getting COVID-19 from in-person, worried about being able to afford care or the insurance didn't cover it. We saw a lot of gaps within the insurance, and that was really concerning how, how much, at this time, when this data was being conducted, the alarming of how long it took an individual to apply for Mass Health and obtain it. It has, I want to acknowledge that it has gotten better, but there's still improvements. So now we're going to see this. Zeta, this, Victor Davila?
Yeah, I'm going to let him in. Thank you.
Okay. I wasn't sure if you could see it. So basic needs, worried about getting food, groceries, right? This was a huge concern of mine. This was a huge concern of mine because I was helping coordinate food deliveries, and we were expecting for individuals to isolate and quarantine, but yet the needs were not being met. So out of the ones that participated, 41 answered yes, that they had a food concern. We're part of the United States, and part of this data, right, reported that we in Massachusetts as a whole, not just Springfield, were number six in food prices. Like, we shouldn't, that was just so mind-blowing, and I'm able to articulate it in an orderly fashion tonight because I've had time to process it over the last year. But that is concerning that at this time, when this was again conducted, we, you know, it came out that we were number six. We're part of the United States, and in my book, that's not acceptable. So safety. Since COVID-19 began, has someone you were dating or married to physically hurt you or monitor and/or control your activity? 2.4 answered yes. And even though that number may sound low compared to the other numbers we are presenting tonight, we know that the number is higher. And the reason I bring this number up in this subject up is because we know that a lot of the domestic violence, right, a lot of the abuse happens within the household, and it takes a long time, and not just physical abuse, but emotional, right? And psychological abuse, right? And individuals have not started to yet process and seek services. So as we're talking about mental health also, we need to be prepared for when those individuals are ready to seek services and speak out. So here's the question that, you know, I know Ayana raised towards youth, and, but within this data, right, tonight, youth did participate it also, even though we narrowed it down to 25 to 34 individuals that identify as youth population did report concerns with housing and financial and even considering not returning to school. So I know that's a youth, but I just wanted to, because we did open up with that, and there is definitely a need for youth also. So here we have 43.7 answered yes, and sorry, I missed, that's a typo there. I meant to write yes, was concerned or worried about their mortgage, rent, utilities for the next few weeks. We know that there was a huge delay that I saw, you know, when I was doing this work also. You know, there was resources, but as I looked at it as a whole state, the way that funding was distributed, it was not equitable, right? There was not on equity base. There were certain populations in the state that received funding or were aware of funding before the Western part. And I want to acknowledge that that's a huge barrier, and that's something, even when we were working, that was brought up constantly, the divide between the state that Western Mass has always been, you know, received or in form of funding or opportunities at a less rate than other communities. So now, we're going to look at mental health within the Black, African-American, Hispanic, and youth population. I'm going to stop sharing for a second because I, for some reason, when they did the update with the DPH website, I was not able to no longer take screenshots of it. Okay, so here we go. Again, between the difference in rates, right? So can everyone see, or let me zoom in. Can you see?
Yeah, we can see. Are you going to share this PowerPoint with us?
I will be glad to, yes.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay. What I would ask is that if you can't see that, you trust me, I am not lying on these numbers. They're right here, and I will be glad to share them with you. Let me just get it to, okay, there we go. So right here, we have. Okay, so for. There's a delay on my end. Sorry. While I get this, any questions so far or any comments? Anything, do the numbers make sense on?
Yeah, I think they do. Let me see if anybody is raising their hands. No, they're not.
It's not showing to see if that helps.
Just to comment about the housing situation, I want to say that another thing that was a barrier was the accessibility to actually being able to go to the facilities and be able to feel the. And be able to fill the applications. Because most of the times um staff from the agencies were actually working from home. So they don't have a fax to receive the information. So it was we scanning them, sending them to their um facility. Sometimes they were not accessible, so it was very hard to be able to follow up on the cases. So it's not only the money, it's also the availability of the services sometimes.
You raise a great point, thank you. And you just um triggered a thought that I recall. Um also, I remember at when that started to um occur, right? Where the the waitlist, it became even a greater barrier, right? We saw that organizations did take um initiative, right? And and were strategic and saying, let us waive this process. And 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 just start the application, right? So like that you're on the waitlist and we're not creating additional barriers. So I just, I don't want to just point out the the negative, but also what was done to try to address. Um the issues and concerns that were um being experienced by the community members. And I think also to your point, right, there was a lot of um, we could all agree, we weren't ready for a pandemic. Yeah, we know that, right? Um there was a lot of hiring on the hot on all across, you know, systems. But especially in the housing, um there was a lot of hiring and there was a freeze before they were able to take um new intake. So because they needed that time to hire, train individuals, right? And we know that um sometimes hiring causes a a barrier itself. Because from right finding the right candidates or um being able to train the right individuals um could be challenging also.
A question, um Adelis, did you break down the youth statistics by race ethnicity as well?
Um I can, I did not for tonight, but I can get that um um to you.
Okay, and um Counselor Davila has his hand ready. He's came in. Um Victor Davila, he's part of the uh mental health subcommittee. Go ahead, Counselor.
Uh thank you, uh Counselor Goban. Uh excellent presentation. Uh if you could please forward those um slide presentation.
Yeah, she's gonna share it with us.
Yeah, and also um kind of the same question somebody just asked, uh the number that really jumped in front of me. Utilities uh challenge, I believe, was of forty three percent having insecurity in pain, they're like the utilities. Uh do you have a breakdown uh in your age bracket, just out of curiosity?
Um I I don't have that tonight, but I could definitely get that um to you as well. So what I could do based off what your questions, I could update um the PowerPoint to include your questions. And um I'm happy to then send it to to Zeta.
Okay, excellent. And uh, okay, thank you so much. I would love to share data. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I don't see anybody else.
Okay, so here we have um and and even when I email this um slide. You're gonna ha- it's gonna be a little bit challenging to see um the actual number. But it's forty eight percent of individuals that identify as Black African American. Um reported uh greater um than fifteen days of poor mental health, right? And then here we have the um Hispanic Latinx as thirty five. And here we have white at thirty three. And Asian at twenty five. And then we have a breakdown here of um the ages. Um this this particular PowerPoint that I'm sharing right now does not include the youth, okay? Another thing I wanted to point out within this data is the education level, right? I know I touched on income. Um but this is the education level that um participated within this data also. So individuals that have less than a high school diploma was thirty six percent. Individuals that had a high school diploma or GED had thirty two percent. A trade school or um um vocational high school, um thirty three percent. Some college, thirty eight percent, associate's degree, thirty five percent. Bachelor's thirty two and graduate degrees twenty nine. I think that's really important to highlight also because as organizations are looking for employees, right? And um are creating trainings and um programming, you know, um that. That we look at strategic ways to make um education and training um accessible for for all individuals, right? We know I at least I know that um within the educational um field also. Um it's not attainable for all individuals to go, for example, for social work, right? Because they can't afford it, right? Um how many individuals, when I think of community health workers that have are usually a single parent. And they're the sole income provider for their household, they can't afford to go, you know, take a year of off. And go to school, right? Um so it's really important that um I think we look at that. And also to um the earlier point, how it caused a delay with um hiring for housing, right? Um care coordinators, case managers, um what were the requirements for those physicians? And um we could, you know, be strategic on how we um train. And hire um certain physicians. Okay, let me stop sharing for a second so I can go back. And I'm going to drop um both references that I used for um DPH. And then the um. COVID nineteen, mental health and substance misuse link also in the chat for you. I had this issue earlier when I was.
Doing the links.
It's not popping.
Okay, is that, is that it, Adelis?
That is it um for my.
Thank you.
If there's any questions or anything else.
Thank you so much. Um does anyone have any questions, Brad, at least? So we are gonna get this PowerPoint for the numbers. And as we know, numbers are always um to me anyways. You can, you can make them look anyway, right? So my thing is the stories behind these numbers. And that's the reason I think that when we did the social work awareness talks and we saw the living people. Who are experiencing this every day. Um to me is is very valuable, but it's very interesting. What was the one that I saw? Well, it's all concerning to me. But we as clinicians, we probably all know this, um that COVID did impact the mental health a lot more than it was before. People who have never had any mental health issues in their lives are now experiencing anxiety, depression. And a whole host of other um issues. And um on the city council, I want to focus on, you know, helping people. Thank you, um Adelis, for the the links. Helping people to kind of, you know, lower their stress levels. Having a good quality of life means a lot. Um and I know sometimes people throw that term around loosely. Um and you know, I don't know if people realize how important a good quality of life is to people. Um and that was, that's what I think our goal is with having people have mental health checkups to prevent a crisis. To, you know, have them access four one three cares before they become homeless, et cetera, et cetera. So Counselor Davila, you had your hand up?
Yes, I do. Thank you, uh Counselor Goban. Just to uh.
You're muted if you're talking.
Uh yeah, I just wanted to get probably you on all the statistics that uh that was presented. Uh in terms of the um uh education, education in the city. I think it was like one third of the city does not have GEDs, is that correct? I mean, or high school education?
Yes.
Okay, cuz uh she uh I heard all the data that talks about uh um G uh high school, GED. And it added more more than hundred percent. I'm just wondering. Maybe I heard it wrong. I'm not sure. Just looking for some clarity. If you can tell me those numbers again.
So what was your question?
No, because the the numbers added up to more than hundred percent with the with the percentages that were given.
On the slide?
Yeah.
Okay, Adelis?
So um to confirm your question is, um individuals that um reported less than a high school diploma. Was thirty six percent. And then individuals with a high school diploma or GED was thirty two percent.
Uh right, do you talk about some college thirty four?
Sure.
Numbers added up to more than a hundred percent.
Okay.
I mean, I truly think that those numbers are right.
Right, so the way the question is, no, you're make a great point. The way the question is posed, right, it's within different sections. Sorry, I'm sorry. Um so. Um individuals within the survey could answer more than one. So they may be associated with a high school diploma. Under undergrad and then a graduate degree. So um I'm gonna say I I believe that that's why it averages out to more than a hundred percent.
Okay, all right. Uh the commission was a little staticky, but I could wait until I see the slides if anything, I'll follow up. But thank you.
You're welcome. I I did.
Thank you very much.
Feedback also on the way that the questions within the survey was asked. Because I think there's room um for improvement also, because there's always open for interpretation, right? Um you could ask the question, but it could be um interpreted um a different way. So um, yeah. But thank you.
Yeah.
I um Zeta, I just wanted to add to your question um regarding the what you were just sharing before. Um um Victor Davila was um asking this question was um thirty five point two. So individuals that had never received or seek services prior to COVID nineteen. And since COVID nineteen, there was a increase of thirty five point two. So um I just wanted to provide that number that you were um referring to.
Yep, absolutely. I believe that I might be higher than that, but. Um anyone else? Did you have another point, Adelis, or no? Okay, um so we are actually doing a survey. Uh BHN has been so gracious to help us uh develop the survey and we even have a um. Uh a link that you can do it online. And it's really just basically about receiving services. Um you know, if you receive services or if you're a provider who provides services, we want to know what the barriers are. Uh because a lot of times that is a barrier to treatment, right? Um many of the agencies have a waitlist right now. And I know that we talked about at one of our meetings. And when we met with the United Way, um they had a mental health um thing. I don't know who was there from here. I can't see. I don't know if anybody, Kathy was there. So Kathy, remember they talked about um having a database kind of. Of people who don't have a waitlist. So if you're an agency and you have do a mental health check in, check up. And the person needs treatment right away, but your agency has a waitlist, you can go to this database and find agencies. Who don't have a waitlist. Um I think that's something that we need, right, Kathy? Go ahead.
Yeah, well, and I was just gonna say, I think one of the real benefits of having this committee or subcommittee. Is I'm seeing it really as a as a hub of the different initiatives that are going on in the city. Um and so I'm thinking like uh the Public Health Institute of Western Mass uh does a lot of data, the youth. Um the youth risk survey data about Western Mass is um the Community Health Needs Assessment Survey Data. So bringing and what those initiatives are ongoing. And I wanted to to mention as well that the um the survey that we've talked about, that we put together. Was was originally designed um to to understand what the stakeholders in the community wanted out of this effort, right? Is is what do you see as the primary things that that a co- committee like this should be driving forward and should be focusing on? And from the standpoint of the providers, from the standpoint of the clients, and from the standpoint of Zeta, what you had called like. Not really bystanders, but like teachers, police officers, people like that who are on the sidelines watching this. Um challenge of lack of access to the community system. And so when I'm thinking about what you just said regarding the the waitlist. Database, there's the MABA website, which collects waitlist data for across the system. And so I think some of what I'm hoping this group can do is have this coming together of people saying, oh yeah, that's already being done. It's over here. We just need to link it. That's already being done. We need to, we need to amplify it. Um that's not being done yet. Who can be working on that? Um and that's, I think that's one of the really exciting things, because a mental health checkup day, nobody's doing anything like that, right? So this group is actively doing that. Surveying the community about what should we be focusing on. That's something that there are pieces that are happening. And I don't know, Jessica, maybe in a future meeting, Elisa could come. I know that the Chana did a whole bunch of interviews of and focus groups of of stakeholders around. What do you think the issues are that we should be focusing on in our community? So I want to be careful that we're not reinventing the wheel in some ways too.
Thank you. No, Kathy, that's perfect, because that's exactly what we want to be doing on this committee. Is if there's something already happening, let's let's make it, you know, citywide, statewide eventually, right? But we're focusing on Springfield. So um I'm really excited that we're actually being able to do that. Like we heard that presentation at the United Way where things are happening that we, a lot of people don't know about. Nicole brought up the four one three cares that I wasn't even aware of, you know? So those kind of things and highlighting them and bringing that and making the public aware of them is exactly what we need to be doing. Um Nicole, go ahead. You had your hand raised?
Yeah, I'm just gonna pay you back there off of Kathy. I agree. You know, I think I said it before is that we don't need to reinvent the wheel. So much of this is already present. I think the biggest barrier that I've I've really notated as as um, you know, talking with different people at the last mental health checkup. Different providers, people and 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 asking those questions of what are the barriers that you see? And and what is, you know, something that you think we can do better? And the number one thing that I think I picked up on is educating each other. So many providers in the community, but they don't even know what other services are out there. So like you might be often offering clinical outpatient work as a private, you know, private practice. But you don't know about, I don't know, in-home therapy that's offered at these other agencies that go into the home. Or you might not know about, you know, um, who knows? There's a ton you might not know about. And that's the biggest piece I think we're running into is clinicians saying, I hear the need. But I don't know where to tell these people to get it. So I think we need to, one, gather all this stuff. We're not recreating the wheel. Let's talk, figure out what is going on. Link these hands together and then educate each other. Because it is more than just putting a resource together and saying, here, we compiled all this stuff that's available to you. It is a matter of educating, ongoing. There's a reason people have to do continuing education in this field. Things are ever changing. So we have to be accountable for holding each other up to those standards as well.
Thank you, Nicole. I'll go ahead, Yana.
Okay, thank you so much. Um I just had a quick thought and thank you so much, Kathy and Nicole, for your for your comments. I wonder, and this is goes back to. I wonder, and this is goes back to Zeta's question around the idea that um getting something paid for, um having the um agencies are paid for the mental health checkups or or some of their resources or what have you. I wonder if the Employment Assistance Program that is already sort of in effect or or not, um if some of those agencies that filter into that potentially are being paid, right? As subcontractors to do some of the work that we need to do in our city employment offices. And so I'm wondering how much or how 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 we could look at what that funding is for that particular program, and then we can sort of expand it, as as someone else talked about, expand that, right? Because now we're in twenty-twenty-two, we've just been through a pandemic and things are very, very different, the world is different, right? And so we have to look at that program very differently. And so I was trying to see if there's any legislation currently on the books in regards to that. I don't see anything right now, but I'm gonna continue to do my research and talk to the and talk to the rep because that might be something that we could do to expand that program currently to pay for some of the uh checkup days or the resources or whatever it is that we'd like for uh folks to be able to access so that the agencies can be be paid. And so I just wanted to put that on the table, not sure if anyone else has any information about it, but certainly I thought that would be a great uh opportunity to share, thank you.
Can I just ask one quick question about that, Zeta, I'm sorry? Um, so I don't know, which program, is it the mass higher?
Employee Assistance Program she's talking about.
Yeah, the Employee Assistance Program, so every agency.
Oh, 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 okay.
An employee assistance program, right? Where you can access mental health uh services, counseling services, you know, referrals for whatever it is that you need for your families. And so that program exists, right? And so how do we tap into that? And then not only how do we tap into that, how do we expand that um and clarify how it's being used? And if we need to um maybe shape it differently, you know, who's administering that? How are they administering that? What does it look like at different agencies? And so perhaps we can take a look at that and do a deep, deep dive into that. And I would love to look at that from the legislative point of view, because maybe there is some legislation around that. And then we can look at some funding to support that work, so I just wanted to, yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much, then, thank you, Ayana, for offering to do a little bit of research on that, I appreciate that. Um, Raissa?
So I just wanted to mention, I'm unsure if Chelsea shared this with you guys, but Gandara recently was granted with being an urgent care facility for mental health. So that means that clients can go into our clinics as a walk-in and we do a brief assessment, and if they really need services right away, we offer same-day or next-day appointments for them to be evaluated. And then if they need prescription for medication, they will be seen within fourteen days of the first day of contact. So that's already happening, we have two clinics in Springfield, and then we have another one in Brockton area. I wanna say that BHN also um is an urgent care facility for these services as well.
Yes.
So um that's one of the things that we can provide. Um, if you know someone who needs help right away, um you can refer them to BHN or to Gandara because we do have the accessibility to see them same day or next day.
Thank you, that's a, that's a really good point.
And also the clinic is open, I'm sorry, um until eight. So for people who are working, um we are trying to remove the barrier of not being of being off um or closed while, you know, they are working, they cannot come. So we're staying open until eight, so when they finish their work, they can actually come and see a uh therapist or prescriber or someone. And we also are helping with medication-assisted treatment. So this is all things that we're bringing, and I'm I'm sure if you guys need more information, Chelsea will be happy to present and talk a little bit more about that.
Excellent, thank you so much. Um, Nicole asked, can DBSS even without any insurance, or do we have the capacity to get help? I didn't see the whole thing. Chat, um to get then enrolled with mass help for ongoing, ongoing care. So I imagine, go ahead.
Workers that help actually engage in them in the system. If they don't have an insurance, we currently have a grant under the CCVAC program where we can use that to pay for the service, so they can receive um the services, just um we need to do those adjustments.
Excellent, okay, thank you so much, and you guys know about my time. We have four minutes. Um, I really love Nicole's idea of having us educate each other, like the urgent care, right? I knew the urgent care is out there, um but I wondered like how many people, we need to go on mass appeal with this. We need to spread the word, right, so that everybody knows, because that's something if a police officer might run into somebody, like the bystanders, right? And they don't know about this urgent care option, they might, they might be given another route. So we wanna uh figure out a way to do that, so Ayana and I, she's my partner in service, I call her not partner in crime, partner in service. I think we're going to figure out a way to get maybe the providers together, and Nicole probably will be the one educating everybody, because she knows everything. Um, but we'll educator, educate each other on our services, on what other services are out there. And then I really love the idea of figuring out, you know, what the barriers are. If it's not happening, let's figure out how to do it together, you know? I'm really big on collaboration, and I think that that's the only way that we're gonna be able to tackle this problem. Um, that's why we have a state rep representative here. Um, you know, it has to come from the state level, we need Neil here or maybe Senator Warren here because it has to be done at the federal level as well. So um, you know, with that being said, hopefully, look for some on- oncoming um maybe trainings for the providers as well as the community people, but mainly, I think I really love the idea of having us know exactly what's going on, so that we can offer it to our people. Thank you so much, any last minute? Great, well, again, thank you all for being here, for coming out, I'm really gonna tap into Jessica and some of her people that come to the training. Um, and we'll see you all next month. But come train us, Jessica, we need training from Chanah people and uh the Youth Mental Health Coalition, yeah, you too. Bye, everybody, good night, thank you.
Thank you.